Hi, I'm Michael Bell. I'm current supervisor of visual and performing arts for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. I'm also an artist, an author, and I'm here to talk to you about advocacy today. So first, I just want to share that everything I do in this world has meaning behind it. And challenging the process while advocating for your programs is definitely not for the faint of heart. If you want to change the culture climates within your building, within your district, within your communities, it all starts with the relationships that you forge. And that all begins with why, why it is that you do what you do? And how can we all become the leaders we are all looking for? So I'm going to start out with this. I first feel that it's my job to build that bridge. Build the bridge between all three of these, the arts educators, the families, the local boards, help everyone to walk across it so they can visibly see work that's often described as selfless service for someone else's success. That is what we do. But I've also seen on the other side of that bridge where dreams come true for kids, especially in the arts and through the arts. So today, we're going to cross it in three parts. What educators can do? How can we bring families on board? And how can we show our local boards the impact that lies beyond the data points that they're just so accustomed to only seeing? Now, we'll say this, my approach is very different. But I'm also someone who's only chased down roles that I believe will transform me and transform the people that are around me. And while 2020 definitely flipped the script on a lot of things, I do believe we are in charge of writing the next act, stepping out of our comfort zones, doing what needs to be done. So let's start with the arts educators. I've often heard the public talk about arts educators. And they're often just God smacked by these talented teens. And they often say that we have such talented kids in our district. But it's the talented teachers that sparked that fire, instilled that belief often within those kids long before they even realized it themselves. And I've also heard districts out there touting their quality programs. But I just want to say it's talented teachers that build quality programs, not the other way around. And when advocating, just remember, it's not what you tell the public, it's what they see. That's what really makes a difference. So with that said, let's take a glimpse into the world of seeing as believing. It's a little short clip, just a taste of the remarkable accomplishments we've made in just three short years here in Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
This goes out to my school. Let's do this.
Where is it? In case I can get you on television. Sale, is this your first sale? Congratulations. There she is, there she is. How are you? You made it a working holiday for you, huh? Fiona, how you doing? I'm good. How's everything? What you making? You having fun?
Do you want to get a picture with Mr. Wells? Yes, please.
Sort of. Literally, you create something from nothing. Not a lot of people in this world that can say they can do that. Artists and entrepreneurs do.
Look what you did to me. You made me what I am and what I will always be.
I shared this video that I compiled with my teachers across a lot of various disciplines. I'm also supervisor, not only of fine arts, but also school library media, world languages, a whole host of other duties as assigned in Queen Anne's County. So I do like to advocate and spread it around. But this one was dedicated to our beloved media specialist, Jamie Giddings Welsh, who passed away this year unexpectedly. And his student ended up winning first place in the statewide conflict resolution bookmark art contest. So we're spanning across disciplines. So getting back to the three areas of focus that I bulleted, what we're really talking about is this, it's really not the bullet points, it's this. It's this perfect triangle. And when it's connected, the school has a great rapport with the home, the home trusts the school, the local boards and the community are well informed, kids are just simply surrounded with love and everybody's happy. When it's not connected, you know, school blames the home, home blames the school, community blames everybody, and nobody's happy. So connect these worlds. And the reason is, I believe, this is what I believe the purpose of education is, is it's the cultivation of the human spirit on a journey of self-discovery. Our kids, you know, they want to know if you see them. They want to know if you hear them and they want to know if they matter. After all, that's really the first thing a child ever learns from us is whether we truly care or not. Now here's your CIA basic needs. Same model, coincidentally, interestingly enough, if you look at it as a gang members, same model, same model that gang members use to initiate. So my question to you is, are you smarter than a gang member? And are you creating opportunities for affiliation that are stronger than the undercurrent that's pulling them in other directions out there? If you are, you most likely have got the juice. You're one of those arts educators that's got that. And this is about knowing what it is that we do best, knowing who we are. I mean, I've often said Vegas knows what Vegas does best. We have to know what we do best. What are we known for? What are you known for within your schools? What are you known for within your district? And who are your students? Do you know them? Do you really know them? What they might become? I personally have tried to make the arts, the involvement canvas, if you want to say it that way, that really bridges that gap between the community and the school system. And make no mistake about it, we are in the relationship business. And without story, there is no brand. Let me say that again, without story, there is no brand. So I began helping our teachers share these stories. I began seeking them out, actively seeking them out. I personally challenged my teachers to find me stories about outstanding student artists, aspiring student artists. And so far to date, I've written around 40 articles. I partnered with our local newspaper editor who helped me turn this idea into a reality. And we now have the Queen Anne's County Public Schools Visual and Performing Arts Teen of the Week articles. And we've expanded to include pre-teens of the week, not leaving out elementary school age kids as well. We also started to make champions. Now, this was a goal, make no mistake about it. It wasn't by accident, it wasn't by happenstance. Make our teachers rock stars, put them in the spotlight, and put student achievements front and center for the arts at the local, the state, at the national level. And the minute I came in here, we did that right out of the gate. And this was Jenna, who went on to Savannah College Art and Design recently on a $48,000 scholarship. She's winning first place in the state at the First Lady's Gallery Exhibition, the very first one I was a part of as a supervisor. So in the age of seize the data, I want to make sure that our teachers aren't missing out on opportunities to still seize the day, have those John Keating, Jaime Escalante, Erin Grill type moments. These are my data points. These are things I'm looking for from our teachers. Now, give you a little backstory. So when I first got here and arrived in this district, the only real exhibition in the county was this superintendent's gallery, which is nice, but it's downstairs, not Board of Education. Space is limited, exposure is minimal, and there's not much foot traffic. As a professional artist myself, I know the value of exposure. And so right away, I knew that while I was going to maintain this gallery space for people to come in the building, the kids needed to have a game, the teachers needed to have a game. I mean, let's be brutally honest here. Our athletes aren't going to sign up for football and pour their blood, sweat and tears into practice every day if there were no games. Touching that field, playing underneath those Friday night lights in front of their friends, their family, their communities. That's so important, goes back to those CIA basic needs. So we needed to level up here, we needed to have a game. That spring, I created our district's first ever art scene, which is two student shows kicking off like fireworks exploding at both ends of the district. They happen the same week, but on different nights. And they include all feeder schools, K to 12. They complete with a National Art Honor Society induction ceremony for the high school age students. And that's a new thing for the district as well. And why the high schools? So why host them at the high schools? This is what's so important. Those kids that are in elementary school, middle school, that aren't in the high school yet, they've now formed a positive attachment to that school before ever even setting foot in the door. How important is that? So that'll help build your programs. And it's recognition for kids of all ages. We're definitely the new game in town, I will say that. So that's what's important about creating a game. But here's the impact that we can also have on families and how having a game can impact your advocacy. So families, I've found over the years, families will get involved and they will help. They will really help you if what you do is visible and it's of quality. After all, tangible results, that's what builds the magic of momentum. So we need to kind of create that environment in a way that it's an environment that kids can thrive in and learn best where they're having some serious fun. That yields achievement and that also is validation for families when they see it, especially if they've never had an artist in the family before. So Art Scene also became the venue to tout out children's successes in front of every family. Because we wanted to make sure these shows are as highly attended as any sporting event, which is key. Successes like this one, this is Cara, who over 28,000 votes were cast for this statewide I Voted sticker contest. And hers was the student that earned the most votes across Maryland and was declared the winner. Cool thing was, the winning designs were exhibited on a year-long statewide tour, beginning at the Maryland House of Delegates. And the winning student artist and their teacher each received gift cards for new art supplies and a governor citation. And there Cara is with First Lady Yumi Hogan. So this really gave our district a lot of statewide exposure. So I give her all the credit in the world and Stephanie Zeiler, her teacher, for entering her. Now Art Scene is also where we began honoring our new Scholastic Art Award winners. If you don't know about Scholastic, more than 77,000 teens in grade seven all the way through 12, from around the nation, submit over 165,000 works annually in about 30 different categories. So there's some of our first winners. And I will say this, Andy Warhol, he won a Scholastic Art Medal when he was still in high school. So these kids are now in elite company. It's a big deal. At first, they're competing against the entire Northeast region at large, stretching from DC through New York City all the way into Maine. And if they make it past the regionals by earning a gold key, they get to compete with the rest of the country in the nation. So I'm a former three-time National Gold Medalist educator. And this is what that medal looks like. And man, is it fantastic to be in Carnegie Hall and be celebrated in front of the world. So regardless of if you win or not, we're really looking to just get kids to enter, put their work out there, and it's really building those programs. Now, Queen Anne's County Public Schools also swept the last Academy Art Museum Student Exhibition, which gives them clout across the eastern shore. Constance Del Nero, she's the director of the Children's Education and Community Programs at the Academy, sold out three first, second and third prize awards in three different categories. And Queen Anne's County took home awards in all the categories. From both high schools, students won. So it was an outstanding display for all. This led to a community partnership and a first ever collaboration between students from Kent Island High with Andrea Schultze as department chair and Easton's Academy Art Museum. They produced this striking exhibition worthy of museum quality artwork. And I'll say, it was really cool was it's all based on works of art within the museum's permanent collection. So the art students had to respond to the collection through a work of art and display it side by side with those artists. So from the Academy Art Awards came the Maryland Art Education Association's Walters Art Museum Showcase. And then from there, students from Kent Island High also made headlines, winning first and second place in the International Torrance Creativity Awards. So you see how this momentum spirals and you see how I'm documenting it and sharing it out for the world. Our art making, as you saw in the first video, even spread into other disciplines like our school library media specialist, who had a record number of entries last year and swept the State Conflict Resolution Day Bookmark Art Contest the past two years in a row. So kudos to those media specialists. And I hope everyone's starting to see the great impact that going out and capturing these great moments can have across even other disciplines. So that brings us to our local boards. Now, it's hard to think about our local boards without giving mention to my CNI team. That's my ride or die secretary on the left. And that's our curriculum and instruction supervisors on the right. And this became a little tradition before the very first big board meeting of every year, we'd take a big selfie together whenever we got together. And we champion and we collaborate with one another. I think this, I'm sharing this because it's so important to collaborate and have a great working relationship with everybody. And when preparing for this presentation, I also asked both our assistant superintendent and our superintendent, whom I have a great working relationship with both, if I could poll our board members and ask them a few questions to gain their unique perspective on the arts in Queen Anne's County Public Schools. And they responded, which was so cool. So I asked them five questions. So here's the first one. I asked them, how can we form partnerships? Okay, so what are some essential questions we should ask a school board that perhaps we don't? And so from their unique perspective, they wanted us to create more partnerships with local businesses, for service projects, community murals, asking board members as a collective and as individuals to help promote learning in the arts. Explain our programs to them. They really wanted that, which was interesting. And they wanted us to ask questions of them to make sure that their programs, our fine arts programs are appropriately funded. So I thought that was a great step into where we're going. Question two, has the board appreciated the spotlight placed on the arts? I wanted to see if I was being heard. And if our teachers, the hard work that they're doing by me capturing all this footage was being heard. They said absolutely love the videos first and foremost. They seem to like those the most because then they can really see it, more so than even a picture. They thought that the presentations have been an excellent means of spotlighting students' creative achievements and general appreciation for the visual and performing arts. On data, they brought up data and they were interested in how the arts correlates to higher achievement in other core subjects. I know Ames just released a couple of great studies that I'm going to share with our local boards that may answer some of those questions for them. Overall, they were extremely impressed with the presentations and I think they want to see more of them. Question number three. So what are some beginning level actions we should take to help promote positive change within the school boards? This is what I posed to them. And one board member suggested perhaps taking small steps to building traditions that the community might come to expect. This is perfect because it's just like Art Scene, what I shared with you. That's going to be a tradition that they'll come to expect. Now I'm thinking, what else, based on their feedback? Another board member shared, have the public more involved in what it is that they're deciding upon. From my perspective, I feel it's so important for the public to get more involved, not just when things don't go your way, but when they're going really good. We don't hear from a lot of people when things are going really good. So to give those kudos to our teachers, our talented teachers that are helping us build these quality programs, that's so important. Question four, what are some potential challenges? I asked them, if any, did they see coming our way? One board member suggested that in public education, there's more and more requirements that are actually being placed on them in the school board. So arts educators need to make sure that they request what they need from the board and why it's important. So I read that is, don't allow yourself to get lost in the shuffle because they're dealing with a whole host of other issues. It's not that they're ignoring the great work that you're doing, but it's got to be constantly in front of them. It's got to be constantly in their face. Now, another idea that a board member said, have a few students talk about the positive impacts that the arts has on their lives. Ask arts professionals, even within the community, to summarize how arts in our schools directed their careers. I thought this was a beautiful suggestion and I can see more video clips and myself going out on the beat to capture some more of that footage for these board members as well. I thought it was a great idea and a very thoughtful response. And the fifth question that I posed to them, how could our art educators, our families or communities, community supporters better connect and build solidarity with our local school boards? What's the best approach from their unique perspective? So their response to me was, create a parent, teacher, citizen focus group or committee of some sort that focus on awareness, promotion, or the importance of K to 12 learning in the arts. Thought that was a very great suggestion. We have a great partnership already with Rick Strittmater and the Queen Anne's County Arts Council. We just hosted a faculty art show to try to keep our art teachers to stay artists, which was so important. So it's a great suggestion from the board member. I also heard fundraising, okay? Promoting and creating support for school learning opportunities. How does that happen? And updates on what's coming up. They want to know when there's something happening in the arts. How do you inform your board? Lastly, they really wanted, again, be involved and be in contact with them. Educate the board on what's going on in your departments. So I think this is very important. I think this, there's a lot here to unpack. And I got a lot out of this myself. My biggest takeaways is, you know, the board, they want, they want to be just as involved as you want them to be involved. So that was a huge takeaway for me. They want to be our partners, but like any partner, I believe you have to, like I said, show them a quality product worth championing. And if you do, as supervisors, bring your superintendents in on the fold in what you're doing. Help contribute to your superintendent's vision and allow your vision to flourish in the process. Because if you want to lead people, I mean, let's face it, you gotta have somewhere to go. I want to thank our board for providing me with such valuable feedback. And thank our superintendent and our assistant superintendent as well for granting me that access to them. It's all about these relationships that keep moving us forward, partnerships. So speaking of partnerships, this is us winning together across my various teams, creating many partner trips. Notice what I did there? Not just partnerships or field trips, but a merger of both, partner trips. So between schools, the larger image here is from a trip where both dance teams, I traveled on the bus with them, we all went to Salisbury University where they got to dance. They got mentored and taught college choices with Salisbury University dancers. This was organized by our state dance organization, which was fantastic. The other two photographs, they're from the Baltimore Visionary Art Museum. This was a field trip that was a joint field trip between both art departments at both high schools across the district. This kind of teamwork is genuine and it's so important. We also, in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, went back to back with teachers of the year. In 2019, it was music teacher Heather Eflin there on the left. And in 2020, our dance teacher and performing arts department chair at Kent Island High, Amber Wright. So as you can see, we've had a lot of firsts and a lot of love, a lot of genuine love, a lot of respect, a lot of collaboration. Our theater teacher at Kent Island High also invited me on a school tour, putting on The Wizard of Oz, which you saw a little glimpse of in the video clip in the beginning. I rode the bus with them as well. And we went to all four elementary feeder schools and both middle schools to put on performances throughout the course of an entire day. This happened just before the pandemic hit. And it was just an amazing experience for those kids, even going behind the scenes, even for me to see what took place behind the scenes and the effort that went into putting on such an incredible performance. And there's our dance team, our dance teams, both of them celebrating a statewide winning performance that Ken Allen put on at Goucher College, where kids from both Queen Anne's County High and Kent Island High, they spent the day at Goucher College taking master classes. And then they put on that great performance. Now, we'll say this, there's something to be said about having great teachers. And I also think having a solid curriculum place is important too. So we've created curriculum this year across visual arts, K to 12, music, K to 5. We brought in a brand new music and theater arts course to our middle schools so that at the middle school level, those chorus theater dance teachers at the high school have a feeder now. It's so important for those kids, social well-being, social and emotional learning, to have access to theater and dance and those type of programs. In music, our music program, when I came in here, In music, our music program, when I came in here, I mean, that was what everybody was talking about right off the gate. And they win. Let me tell you, Allshore Band, Chorus consistently have a presence. I mean, you look at that stat, over 45 students earning honors in Allshore Band last year. These programs also participate in numerous festivals, not just on the eastern shore, but across many states, from singing at Maryland Education Festival organized by our state's outstanding fine arts coordinator, Alicia Lee. We loved going to that. The high school bands playing at Hershey Park in Norfolk in Williamsburg, Virginia, where Queen Anne's County High's band under Eric Wright earned superior ratings for each of their performances. Symphonic Band receiving a best overall award and Concert Band, I mean, you name it. Going back to Allshore, it's an interesting little story. We have one teacher that, speaking of data, I'm not sure she knows that I, I've seen this, her tracking this. There's our band director, Heather Fullerton at Centerville Middle. She tracks entries annually and shares those stats with the public. And it's something I used to do as an art teacher with Scholastic and she probably doesn't notice, she will now, but sharing this out to the public, I mean, she's had 577, I counted them up, 577 students auditioned for Allshore, 326 students selected since 2003. So her program's got a game. And both our band and chorus programs and theater programs at the high school level, our dance programs, it goes without saying, they've got games. Kent Island High's band, Kim Mogason, they even made it to Carnegie Hall. Doesn't get any better than that. So that's making champions in a monumental way. And for me, my role, keep sharing out their stories. We also took all state. So the past five years, only one student from the eastern shore has earned one of those spots. And I give all the credit in the world to our outstanding band directors and dance teachers for helping inspire the kind of hard work and dedication that is exemplified here when it pays off. And in 2020, Queen Anne's County Public Schools was recognized as the 2020 Best Communities in Music Education. Now, this is a national honor. It's the first time in history that we made this prestigious list. Our band director, Kim Mogason, worked really hard to get the data all together for us. And just 754 school districts nationwide were selected. QA CPS was one of only six districts in Maryland selected. So kudos to our music folks. In art, we celebrated our first ever advanced placement studio art and design courses in the history of Queen Anne's County Public Schools a couple of years ago. And we've had 100% pass rate, 100% the past two years that we've had AP in the district with lots of perfect scores of five. So we're doing something right. And who says? And we also brought, you know, music theory, AP music theory to both high schools, sending both of those teachers AP training. So who says music and art aren't competing with the content areas when it comes to being college and career ready? We certainly are in Queen Anne's County. Now, our National Art Honor Society students, they also participate in service projects like this one, Art For Your Home. This is a project we collaborated with through Rick Strittmater and the Queen Anne's County Arts Council, where students created art for homeless students, I mean homeless persons transitioning into homes for the very first time. And what a special way, instead of giving them art that people didn't want anymore, discarded, to have these students create art specifically for those individuals. So this is very powerful. And on the right there, our students at Queen Anne's County High also participated in the Centerville Chapter of Rotary International this year. Just outstanding groups of students whose talents were brought out by very talented and caring teachers at our schools. And we spread the wealth around. We brought them into the board meetings for spreading that wealth publicly with students, teachers who were honored for their Scholastic Art achievements, principals even, when Principal Shrekengas was honored as a finalist with the Ames Leadership Awards. And I will tell you this, when we were getting in the car, we were driving out there and Principal Shrekengas saw the article in the newspaper hit that he was up for this finalist through Ames that nominated him for. And he said, so I'm the arts principal now. Can't even walk this back if I wanted to, could I? And he's exactly right. And that's what it's about. It's about bringing our principals on board with what we do too and allowing them some, you know, time in the spotlight with our teachers as well. And even though 2020 forced many of us to be virtual, we still took place in First Lady Art Exhibitions. We also became recognized as state leaders in the arts. There's myself, Ms. Zeiler being recognized. We brought a couple of other teachers on board to deliver statewide presentations on providing for authentic artistic voice and encouraging communication with parents in the art elementary setting. So I personally delivered over 20 virtual workshops across the state and at the national level when we were going virtual. And this is so important to keep conversations alive. I've got some great supervisor colleagues too, that I've leaned on across the state. Our fine arts supervisors, media supervisors, word language supervisors, we're in constant contact. We're in constant talks to try to make opportunities for kids. So I want to shout out to all our supervisors across the state. Where did all this lead? State panel discussions on planning the 2021 art seasons and visual arts chorus band. I even teamed up with our ELA supervisor, Ms. Passan, delivered eight district PDs that cut across all disciplines from fine arts to ELA. We reached about 225 to 275 teachers per session. I was also selected for the National Art Education Association's National Convention. And while 2020 was canceled eventually and we went virtual with 2021, I plan to present again about our district's art scene at the National Convention in New York City this spring. So without giving away all my secrets, I'm going to end with this. When it comes to advocacy, having a vision can change a culture, instilling belief, being the leaders you are looking for and making marks that the public, that your local boards, that families cannot ignore. There's a lot of kids out there contemplating their future, their very uncertain future, especially in the arts. So we need to keep providing an experience of a lifetime, meaningful experiences that challenge the process. And it all starts with hope. Hope that creates moments that can turn into movements that instills belief. So keep fighting everyone, keep dreaming big, and keep the arts alive. We certainly are in Anne's County Public Schools. Thank you for having me.